I'd like to call the order. Call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting of July 1st. And we have a dignitary in the office, Mr. Krug, Mike Krug's father. And would you be so kind as to lead us in the place of allegiance? Your father.
She's not you.
Sorry. We're full of surprises.
Yeah, enough to do.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You consider remain standing here, Ben? As we approach Independence Day, we begin decorating our houses and vehicles with red, white, and blue, filling our coolers with beverage, and preparing gluttonous amounts of food to share with our family and friends. Take a moment to reflect on how this is possible. For 208 years, we have been a nation created on religious morals and the toil of immigrants and Native Americans. Working together, they have labored in the fields, created entire cities, transportation systems on the land, sea, and in the air. Educational institutions and libraries were developed. Our children were provided educational opportunities. Science and technology soared, and when needed, men and women fought for our wars, all in the name of God and country. So when you are celebrating this 4th of July, remember every one of us is important in maintaining our freedoms, creating new opportunities, and working toward compromise for the betterment of the whole, our city, our island, our United States of America. Thank you. Roll call Denise.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Tim Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Some announcements? I have a couple, but do you, Ben, do you have some you'd like to make?
Sure, yes, Mayor. Just one announcement. On your consent calendar this evening, there will only be five items instead of six. The actions will not be presented to you this evening. I do want to point out that is because Denise spent the entire weekend making sure that leases got out as scheduled. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Cindy, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
Richard?
Nope, not yet.
Joe?
No, thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple. Just a reminder that DMV will be providing service on the island July 7th through the 10th. And those of you, hopefully if you don't have an appointment and you need to see them, please come up to City Hall or give City Hall a call. And we welcome back the DMV. The other thing I'm kind of proud to announce that, the city's going to be implementing an Avalon Student Recognition Proclamation. So for those students of Avalon who have proceeded in their education past high school that were residents of Avalon and have gone on to either a four-year education, graduated from that successfully, gone, you know, met their career path, whether it be cosmetology, EMT, auto mechanic, whatever, we have a proclamation that we will prepare. There is an application that will be put online. The parents can get the application online or pick it up at City Hall. And then we'd be very happy to recognize that student either at a council meeting or send the proclamation to them. So we're excited for all the young people that are making advancements in their education. Many will move on and out of Avalon, and some, of course, I hope will be returning to give us their expertise. So we congratulate all those Avalon students that have progressed their education. So that's all. And that's all.
Okay. Moving into the presentation section of the meeting. Mayor, we have two this evening. As you alluded to, the first one does involve a couple of Krugs. We're pleased tonight to officially reintroduce to the community our very own Avalon Fire Chief, Mike Krug. I noticed that he's brought some folks here with him. So, and of course, you know him, the community knows him, but we wanted to officially unveil or re-unveil Mike in this new capacity. So if I could, please bring our fire chief to the podium just to say a couple of words, along with anybody you'd like to bring with him. I know that his father is also a chief in the service in Hawaii, so perhaps he'd like to bring his father to the podium as well. Thank you, City Manager, Mr. and Madam Mayor, and council members. I've never heard it put about unveiling a Krug before, but anyway, I promise to keep this short. I've been known with no agenda in front of me and an open mic to get off track, so I promise I won't do that tonight. But just thank you so much, and it's my honor to be part of such a great department and a great organization. I'm glad my dad was here for this, and maybe he wants to say words. The previous council, some of the current council members were a big part of our old Engine One being donated to the Hawaii County Fire Department, and thank you very much.
Allahu Akbar, everybody. I would certainly like to thank all of you for your generous donation for the Krug truck. It was something we really needed, and we're going to put it to a lot of good use. Enjoyed your time. We've had a wonderful time. Too bad I've got to go home tomorrow. Thank you very much. Thank you. Allahu Akbar.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Krugs. Next up, we have Catalina Island Water Update and Stage Two Public Outreach Plan presented by Southern California Edison. We have a cast of thousands from Edison with us this evening. It's being led this evening by Robert Quintero and Jeff Lawrence. So we'll first introduce Robert Quintero, and he will have a presentation to go along with it. Robert?
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate the introduction. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Robert Quintero. I'm Director of Local Public Affairs for Southern California Edison with responsibilities for the metro region, which also include the city of Avalon and Catalina Island proper. With me this evening is Bill Delane. He's the Region Manager of Local Public Affairs, who will be serving as your primary local public affairs representative. As many of you may remember, Hilda Delgado was here and has been temporarily reassigned to other projects on the mainland. However, will be supporting Bill on his endeavors while here on the island. Bill is knowledgeable in the water matters and will be residing in Avalon for an extended period of time. He'll be leading our local public affairs efforts in dealing with various initiatives related to the city of Avalon and Catalina. Bill will be reaching out to you in short and set up a little meet and greet and get to know you a little better. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. The purpose of our presentation is to bring you up to date on the Catalina Stage Two Water Rationing and the West End Water Supply. I will be moderating the presentation. We have several speakers tonight, and I'll introduce them now. Those individuals who are joining me this evening are with Southern California Edison and will be presenting on the following. Jeff Lawrence, who many of you know and who's been here before to address this body. He's a Senior Project Manager of Catalina Projects, Catalina Stage Two Water Rationing Update and Stage Two Activation. Will be providing a presentation on the timeline and provide you with information related to our community outreach efforts, which include an upcoming open house, including two Stage Two public meetings. Thank you. The next individual is Ron Jensen, who is with Corporate Environmental Health and Safety, and his presentation will be around the West End Water Supply. Thank you. Randy Collins with our Business Resiliency Team, responsible for our West End Water Operations, will be presenting on the operations related to the West End Water Supply. I would like to encourage you, as we go through the presentation, if you could please hold your questions to the very end. That'll give us an opportunity to get through the presentation and be able to adequately respond to any inquiries or questions you may have. Also need to note that there have been several questions that have been asked over the course of several months from the mayor and members of the City Council with regards to subjects that may not be related to tonight's council meeting, and want to inform you that those have not gotten a notice. We continue to provide the resources needed to adequately prepare a response for you, and we'll get those to you shortly. I will now turn it over to Jeff to get started with her presentation.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeff Lawrence, Senior Project Manager with Southern California Edison and Lead Project Manager for the Stage Two Water Rationing Project. As previously reported to the council, as well as in a communication sent out to all of our customers on May 30th, we've been preparations for Stage Two Water Rationing. Our previous forecast estimated us to be in Stage Two Rationing by about July or August, and we are here to announce that we've set a date of August 11th, based on our current forecast and the current water level at the Middle Ranch Reservoir at 337 acre feet. Capacity of the reservoir is 1,149 acre feet approximately. So we are approaching 300 acre feet here on or around August 11th. At this point in time, it is necessary for us to set a definitive date, as we have a lot of regulatory requirements that we have to accomplish filing our Tier Two Advice Letter 30 days in advance of activation. Unless there is a torrential downpour, which I'm really hoping for, we will be activating on August 11th. On May 30th, our customer water allotment letters were sent out to all of our customers. We have heard some people say they haven't received their water allotment letter, so we want to inform everyone it went out. The letters went out to the account holders. So if you're a tenant and your landlord is paying your utility bills, they are the ones that are in receipt of the water allotment. So we encourage everyone to reach out to their landlords in those situations. We can also produce a duplicate letter if anyone needs a copy. In the next several weeks, we'll be communicating out our Tier Two Advice Filing on July 11th to the Public Utilities Commission and mailing out information to our customers as well. We also intend to hold an open house on July 17th, and as Robert said, that's where we'll have an open forum to discuss not only Stage Two Water Rationing, but any questions about our water systems, any other topics that have come up in council meetings. We'll have subject matter experts at the open house ready to answer the community's questions. And then on July 22nd will be our public meeting for our Stage Two Water Rationing. Know the type's a little small in this letter, but this is more of a detailed timeline for our next steps and also what we've accomplished to date thus far. As I said before, on May 30th, all of our customers received not only their water allotment letters, but a copy of our mandatory water rationing Schedule 14.1 that has the guidelines for executing and activating our Stage Two Rationing, along with frequently asked questions, and also a variance request form to be submitted for customers that feel they have a water allotment that is significantly lower than was reasonable. And we have received several variance requests thus far, and we're actively processing those. In the coming months, starting on July 9th, we'll be filing our Tier Two Advice Letter with the California Public Utilities Commission. And then on August 10th and 11th, we'll be holding, we'll actually be announcing our public meeting schedule for July 22nd. We'll be announcing that on our local newspapers, as well as on se.com on the Catalina homepage. On July 11th is when our distribution to all of our customers will go out with their water allotments that were previously sent out on May 30th. In addition to the information that was provided on the last communication, we'll also have a water reference guide for how to read your water meter to assist customers in managing their daily water usage. And then we'll also have the actual public meeting notice for the July 22nd meeting and information about our Tier Two Advice Filing to the PUC. On the 17th, we'll be holding an open forum at the high school gymnasium, at the school gymnasium from 4:00 to 7:00. And we'll have several subject matter experts there to answer many of the community's questions. On the 22nd, we'll be holding two sessions for a public meeting at 10:00 a.m. and at 6:00 p.m. at the school auditorium. We'll be able to have an open forum discussion about the Stage Two Water Rationing, have some presentations, as well as subject matter experts there as well to answer the community's questions about Stage Two Rationing. On August 4th, we've prepared some new public awareness materials that will replace the materials that are currently out in public now in the restaurants and hotels. We'll have people out in the field distributing those materials so that August, on August 11th, those materials can be presented to the public. And with the intent of communicating the need to conserve water to the visitors coming to the island to assist our local businesses in getting the word out. On August 11th will be our first day of activating Stage Two Water Rationing, and then we'll begin enforcing Stage Two Water Use Restrictions. Then on an ongoing basis, we'll be monitoring customers' usage, and as people exceed their water allotments, we'll be letting them know through their billing statements or through direct mailing if they've exceeded their allotment, letting them know if there's a warning or if there's the need to install a filter restricting device. And then we'll also be communicating regular updates as far as Stage Two goes in the local newspaper, as well as communicating with our customers through direct mailing or billing notice, and then also providing monthly updates to the council on a regular basis to inform everyone how the rationing is benefiting the community, and then also what our current reservoir level is. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ron Jensen, who'll be talking about the West
Good evening. I'm Ron Jensen with Edison's Corporate Environmental Health and Safety Department. I'll be providing an update on the West End Water Supply. The West End is considered that portion of Catalina Island, which is west of the Isthmus or the Two Harbors area. And you can see there's four primary coves that are served by the water supply system over there. On June 18th, Edison received a customer complaint about the water quality at the Emerald Bay Campground located on the West End. An investigation into the water quality from Howland's Well, which serves customers on the West End of Catalina, has found that water meets primary water standards for bacteriological monitoring. However, the water does not meet secondary drinking water standards set by the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water, for acceptable levels of chloride and total dissolved solids. The secondary drinking water standards were set by Division of Drinking Water to address aesthetic, aesthetics such as taste, color, and odor. These standards are not based on addressing adverse health effects. It is suspected that the well may be experiencing the intrusion of seawater. SCE is working closely with the Division of Drinking Water and has provided all requested monitoring results. The Division of Drinking Water is providing ongoing oversight and direction to Edison on this water quality issue. Short-term consumption of the water from the Howland Well does not have health impacts for most people. However, while SCE continues to investigate the groundwater provided by the well, potable water is being provided throughout the West End for drinking, brushing teeth, dish and utensil washing, ice making, and food preparation. An advisory jointly prepared with the Division of Drinking Water has been issued and is being distributed to our customers on the West End. The Drinking Water Division contacts are listed on that advisory. And that is the update that I have on the West End. At this point, Randy Collins has some additional information that he's going to provide on the West End Water Supply.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to tell you what a beautiful city you have here. I've not been able to visit here ever before, and so I've been enjoying my time here. But as he said, I'm here to talk about the operations in regards to providing water to the West End based on this current information that Ron just shared with you. First and foremost, I want to let you know that we are continuing to use the existing Howland's Landing Well system. We use that for sanitary purposes, as well as continued fire suppression purposes. So that well system is still in use, and they're drawing off that every day. The second thing I would tell you is that, to get around that system and still provide potable water to our eight customers on the West End, and quite in particular, the four heavy customers that we would consider, the 4th of July yacht club, Camp Cherry Cove, Camp Cherry Valley Cove, as well as Howland's Landing Camp, and then the Emerald Bay Camp, we've provided small tanks in or near their kitchens, and we've filled those tanks with potable water. And then those tanks are plumbed right into their kitchen. So that's how they're getting their potable water there. We truck that potable water in daily. And then, aside from that, we've also been providing bottled water to not only those four customers, but the other four customers and yacht clubs that are in the coves as well. So that's kind of a summary of our operations. It's again, just bulk water provided into those small tanks, as well as provided bottled water, and then continuing using the Howland's Well system for fire suppression and for sanitary reasons. With that, I'll turn it back over to Robert.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, if you have any questions with regards to our operations currently, I'd like to encourage you to contact these numbers. During the weekend and evenings, we have a 1-800 number, which is 1-800-655-4555. And you could also refer to our website, which provides with updates, which is at www.se.com/catalina. And you get information there with regards to Stage Two facts, questions, and answers, and various request forms are also available. And for water conservation tips, you could also refer to Save Our Water at www/saverhto.org. And at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions that the mayor, members of the City Council may have of our team.
Thank you. Joe, did you have, anybody have questions?
I have maybe a quick one. At the very beginning of the presentation, and I don't know if it's possible to go back to that, I couldn't quite write fast enough, but you were talking about revisions to the tariff that you will be... One more. One more prior, please. And revisions to our existing water rationing tariffs on July 11th.
So back in, I want to say February, the CPUC issued, I want to make sure I quote this correctly, Resolution W. 4976 directing all utilities with mandatory rationing tariffs to update their tariff at that time, when we file our advice letter to activate Stage Two Water Rationing. And that resolution is for us to adjust our tariff so that our advice filing went from a Tier One Advice Filing to a Tier Two Advice Filing. There are also some other revisions that our regulatory group is working on, some minor revisions to some of the language to clarify it, but most of the changes are very minimal at this point.
So it sounds like, if I could just intervene, that it's just acknowledging going from Phase One to Phase Two, is that accurate?
For the Tier Two Advice Filing? Yes. And then there's a change in our tariff now, whereas previously to activate Stage Two, we would file a Tier One Advice Letter. In this resolution, now we're being directed to file a Tier Two Advice Letter, so we're making that change to our Schedule 14.1, which is our mandatory rationing tariff.
So the regulations themselves aren't being changed? In other words, there aren't any additional conditions that were proposed as part of that? It sounds like it was largely procedural?
Correct.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Well, that was pretty Greek, actually, to somebody who's not in the water business. But if what I hear you're saying, Ben, is that there's no revisions to the tariff itself, it's basically filing the letter saying we're moving from Phase One to Phase Two Rationing?
No, there is a change to the tariff. The tariff currently says that Edison will file a Tier One Advice Filing Letter.
What does that mean?
That's, and I'm not a regulatory expert, but that is how we are directed to initiate the mandatory stage of our rationing tariff. So a Tier One Letter has less requirements. There's no need for a public meeting. With a Tier Two Advice Letter, we are directed to hold a public meeting.
In other words, as you go into Phase Two, it's obviously more dire, and so your public notification requirements are more onerous. You have to convene a meeting like they're doing in the gym, so that people are aware of the implications. Tier One requirements are less severe, and so the notification requirements are stringent.
Correct.
Are you changing the notification? What I'm trying to understand is, what is the change? What specifically is the change in the tariff?
So some of those changes are still in progress. What we are directed by the PUC in this resolution was to make sure that our tariff says we'll file a Tier Two Advice Letter, as opposed, right now it currently says Tier One. That language will change in our mandatory rationing tariff.
So, okay, so again, it really is largely procedural, and the world of CPUC is a horror of mumbo jumbo, but if there were additional requirements that were being imposed as part of Phase Two, that would also have to go through a public process as well, from what I recall from how that works. And so there's nothing additional outside of what we're already aware of from the published tariffs as far as what is required that's being imposed, if I'm understanding things correctly.
There are some clarifications that are going to be made during this opportunity that we'll be able to present at the public meeting as well.
Okay.
But clarifications are not additional requirements, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We're not making any significant changes to the tariff. There are going to be some clarifications made in the current language of the tariff.
Okay. Please understand from, anybody in the community is looking at this, and you're saying that you're going to revise your existing water rationing tariffs. So what are those revisions? And I think what you're saying is that you don't know at this time. And that's okay to say that, just say you don't know. And when will that information be available?
The one that we know about, that we're being directed by the PUC, is that we will file a Tier Two Advice Letter now instead of a Tier One. That'll be a definitive change in our tariff. The rest of the changes are in progress, and we'll be able to share those at our public meeting.
Do you have any questions, Joe?
Yes, I do. There's a lot of water being moved from pump station number two down to the West End. That water was, that's drinking water for the city of Avalon that's now being redirected to the West End, which, of course, we don't mind sharing our water, because those are other human beings that need it. What is the water being used for that's being moved down there? And at the beginning, so this is a part, this is a two-part question. At the beginning of this whole problem that you guys have had down at the West End, or we have had as a community, Edison promised that they would be barging in water to the West End, and they're not barging in any water to the West End. Why is that? Wouldn't that be a better way to deal with this, is to barge it in and pump it off barges? What is the water used for? And why aren't you using barges? That's what I'd like to know.
First of all, I'm going to have Randy respond to your question. I'm not aware of any promises that were made, but I'll have Randy respond, and then we can address it.
Yes, sir. Just, your questions are, what is the water being used for? The water that's being pumped from Pump House Two, that is being trucked into the four camps, is being placed into those small tanks that I talked about, that are plumbed right into the kitchens. So that's really what they're making food with, preparing food with, and, you know, kitchen operations, and that sort of thing. So that's the potable water that we're moving up there and going into those tanks that are directly pumped directly into the kitchens. The second thing in regards to the barging, obviously, the bottled water is coming from off the island. We've made, we've had some purchases from off-island, we've had some purchases from Catalina Beverage, and that water is coming in, and so the bottled water, we're getting from off-island and taking it in. The second piece to that is in regards to the barging. We are looking at several options in terms of long-term solutions to this problem, and that is something that, I don't have any information for you, I'm on current operations. So I know that they're looking at long-term operations, and there are several different solutions that they're kind of looking at, but in terms of what they're going to do for long-term operations, we don't know at this point, and maybe have more information at the July 17th meeting. Does that answer your questions, sir?
The first part of it, yes, because you're using the drinking water that was allocated, was directed for Avalon for firsthand use in kitchens and preparation, and people using it. it for drinking, which is good. But the barging in is really important, I think Edison should be barging in water, and bringing it right into those ports, and pumping it off the ships. I think that would be more economical than taking it from the water source that we have earmarked for Avalon, because we're going to need that water. I mean, if it's an emergency, yeah, we can, of course, we can share the water, and we would gladly do that. But my concern is that we're going to reach Stage Two at a much quicker level, because there is tanker after tanker that I've seen go back and forth between pump station number two and the West End, at 3,000 gallons a shot. And what, is there going to be any end to that, or is this just the way it's going to be every day from now on?
Well, as I said, Edison is looking at the long-term solutions, and I can't tell you a timeframe on that, but I just want to assure you that we are very conscious about the water levels, because of the drought situation. And to date, you know, the tankers that you're talking about, to date, we have only sent .05, .051 cubic, or, excuse me, .051 acre-feet of water to the West End. So it's a very small amount, and I realize that the perception of big tankers is a significant thing, but in terms of what an acre-foot is of water, it's a very small amount of water.
325,861 gallons is an acre-foot. Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks. I was just going to ask you. So, over here. So, the West End does not receive water out of the Thompson Reservoir, correct? Or is that, oh, they have their own pumps, or where does that water go from the West End? I'm pretty sure it doesn't come out of the Thompson Reservoir, is that correct?
That's correct. The West End that we're referring to, which is from, does not include Two Harbors, but every point west of Two Harbors, and those particular communities, that is all fed from Howland's Well, which is right outside of Howland's Landing Camp.
Okay. It'd be nice to have a map of all your processes, I mean, all your pipelines that go from where to where, from the wells go to service other coves in town. It'd really be nice to be able to see that visually somewhere. It would be really nice for us to be able to look at that, to see where the water's coming from, and where it goes, how it's distributed.
Okay.
That would be very nice for us to look at, and we'd have a better idea, but taking water out of the Thompson Reservoir at this time is really, it's really kind of, we're in dire straits of water, and it just kind of irks me a little bit to see water be taken out of there, even if it's a little bit. And maybe, like Joe had the right idea, maybe we, I'd have Edison go ahead and start barging it in. That's just my opinion on it, but I don't know if you guys explored that option yet.
I know that they're looking at several options, and that is one of many options that they're looking at.
I just, I don't know, who's the, who's the person to take a stab at? When you talk about enforcement for Stage Two, what does enforcement mean, besides looking at somebody's bill and saying they're out of compliance? What is enforcement?
I have Joe answer that question.
So really, there's two items that we're going to be monitoring. One are the water allotments, and comparing customers' usage to their allotment, in which case, if they exceed their allotment for the first time, we'll issue a warning. A second time would be a flow restrictor for a minimum of a three-day period, with a $200 removal fee. And then beyond that, a flow restrictor installed indefinitely until we're out of Stage Two rationing. The other piece of our code enforcement is around water use restrictions, and they're almost identical to the restrictions from Stage One conservation. So they have to do with the uses of portable water. So, hosing down a driveway, unless it's for public safety, is, would be a violation of our Stage Two water use restrictions. So, our code enforcement inspector will be out in the public for inspecting those types of infractions, and citing them when they occur.
Do you imagine that, eight to five, Monday through Friday? Is that going to be around the clock? Middle of the night? I mean, we have a lot of visitors on the island that are staying, and I don't know how many CUPs we have, but we have lots of people staying for weeks, a week at a time. Those folks aren't getting a big clue, and I know you're going to be providing the information, and hopefully, it was going to be in English and Spanish, but, and I don't know if we're joining in on that, or we, or...
Phase Two is under Edison's...
Totally under Edison. Okay. So, yeah, I'm just a little concerned in how you, no, I guess you do the best you can.
So, one other question about the restriction, I just have for you guys. There is quite a few fire suppression systems in the city, residential and commercial. If there are restrictions, if somebody goes over their allotment, how is that going to affect the fire suppression system? Are they going to be able to maintain the proper pressure for their fire suppression system? Have we looked into that at all? I mean, it's going to be an issue, because if you put restrictors on that, those things that only have to be a certain amount of water has to go in those to activate them. It might be a concern, I don't know if you guys looked into that, but there's quite a few of them here, on the island.
So, on the fire suppression systems, we would be able to install a flow restricting device if the fire suppression system was on a isolated, separate meter.
Correct.
In situations where it's on the main meter, a flow restricting device is not practical. We're not going to do anything that's going to be a public safety concern. So, we are currently looking at other alternatives, if we can install a flow restricting device with our regulators and internal groups. And so by the public meeting, and by the meeting on the 17th, we should have an answer for those scenarios. We're trying to get some estimations on how many fire suppression systems we have on the main meter, but that data isn't readily available.
Yeah, and most of them are, the residential's sometimes aren't on a separate meter, though, I don't think. Some of them aren't. But, commercial, yeah, they have their separate meters. But that'd be just something to think about, because there's quite a few of them in town.
We're absolutely aware for it, mindful it, and addressing it.
Go ahead, Ollie.
I'm not sure who this question is for, but all these extraordinary expenses you're incurring to provide water, portable water to the West End, I'm assuming that's all going into the regular water costs, so that we all get to pay for it the next time we do a rate adjustment?
I'm glad you asked that question. I mean, that's a question internally, we're trying to identify whether it's part of rate base, or part of shareholder expenses, and so we'll have a response to you for the upcoming meeting in August, or excuse me, in July as well. If you can imagine, this undertaking hasn't been easy. Our, you know, our first priority, first and number-one priority was our obligation to serve and to continue to provide those residents on the West End with portable water. And so, as we sort of now, the dust has settled with regards to our operation, we have an operation that's in full force, providing water to ensure that those individuals on the West End have the adequate supply. And so, you know, to reassure you with regards to the Pump House Two, the Howland's Well is still in full operation, all right? And so, the only one part of the component that is being, the water that's being used is for portable purposes, which is plumbed directly to the kitchen, as has been indicated with regards to filling those tanks. And so, thank you for your question. And so, in closing, we'd like to encourage you to join us to our upcoming open houses, which is scheduled for July the 17th. It will take place at the open house at Avalon School Gymnasium, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and followed by a follow-up meeting on July the 2nd. That'll be a Stage Two public meetings at the Avalon Auditorium, and we'll have actually two meetings on that day, one at 10:00 AM, and one at 6:00 PM. So...
Well, I think, I just have two more questions.
Absolutely.
Low-flow devices, Ron Height was saying that there's going to be more coming to town, that we can put on, people can put on their showers, and they're even looking at one that's a little more restrictive. Will those be available at these meetings for people to get?
They will, it is our anticipation to have them available for that meeting. We'll also have them available at the service center. Ron had indicated, he had the conversation with you with regards to that, so we're looking at these flow restrictors that are much more cutting-edge, much more advanced, and are available in the industry now.
Okay. And, so, I'm assuming now, at the Howland Well, Howland's Well, you're, are you having to test that daily to see how those sodium chloride things, I mean, if that much is leaching up, or infiltrating the system, at what point is it not usable at all? And then you have a bigger problem. And I guess, then how long before, you're looking at a long-term solution, and, I mean, are we talking a year? We talk at two years? Who can talk on the technical side?
So with regards to the water intrusion at the well, we're continuing to monitor that on a daily basis, right? And so since it's not being used for human consumption, and it's strictly just for fire suppression and irrigation purposes, right? That gives us an opportunity to actually assess the situation. And so, we're identifying internally means and ways in which to remedy the situation, or look at other alternatives. And that's really, we appreciate you being patient with us and trying to identify that, because it's not a quick fix overnight solution. And so, eventually, we're going to come back to this body with our next steps, in terms of what we're doing to remediate the West End.
Okay. And one other question, I'm sorry. The million-gallon tank, is there rumor out there that that's going to be relined, or you're doing something with the million-gallon tank?
I didn't come prepared to speak on that subject.
Oh, okay. Okay. That is West End, so, okay.
That's actually a mismus.
Still West.
Yeah. Want to ask another question, Mayor? Sure. Okay. I was working with Hilda Delgado, which, she was your public affairs representative. I was referred to her by you. I want to ask you, sir, I asked, I asked Hilda for a comprehensive, complete list of all Edison's assets, pipes, aquifers, wells, reservoirs, from Pebble Beach all the way down to the West End. I want to see a comprehensive list of all the assets that are in reference to drinking water on Catalina, well water, all the water. I want to see tariffs, allocations. I asked for this two months ago, okay? I hear from Edison representatives that you guys will do things in a timely manner. Timing's of the essence right now, and I've given you guys a couple months now. I was just beginning to make some ground with Hilda, and now I understand, just recently, today, you guys put her in another place now. So, does that mean that the information that she had prepared for me, what she said, she just, she was, she was in the process of getting that information, but it was a pretty tenacious thing to do, because she was not, because she was bucking water doing this, no pun intended there, but she had something going for me. And this is really important, that I have this information, so I can see exactly where we're at, and where do we sit, and how much water's underneath the ground, and how much is being produced. And what is Edison doing to provide us with a viable, clean, affordable, drinking source long-term? I'm talking not something that's gonna, not, I'm not talking about something that's going to last us five years, and then we're going to be in the same situation. I want you guys to start talking about, like, quadrupling the output of the desalination system, dredging Middle Ranch. We, I mean, I know you guys are pushing hard towards this bedrock well, but that's another finite solution, and we need an infinite solution. We're looking at long-term here. We don't want to be stuck in the same situation that we're in in five years. So, I'd like this to be on record, at this point right now, that I expect, in a timely manner, that report, or that information that I requested from Edison, because I don't think it's out of, it's out of my understanding that that's something that you guys should be able to put together. And Hilda said she almost had it, but unfortunately, you guys let her go yesterday, or somebody let her go away from this project. So, if you could come up with that information for me in a timely manner, which I don't know what that is for you guys, I would really appreciate it.
Councilmember, thank you for your inquiry. Hilda's still with the company, she's not left the company. She's been assigned temporarily. However, she will be supporting Avalon efforts in collaboration with Bill Delane. There is a lot of institutional knowledge that is there, and to your point with regards to the document that you requested, many of us have seen portions of that document, it's an extensive document, it's really comprehensive, because it involves the entire system, not just in Avalon, but if you could imagine, 74 square miles within this island. And so, we're working towards that end, preparing a document that we could make available to the members of the city council. And once we get that, the whole, sole purpose of Bill Delane being here is to ensure that there's someone on the island that could continue to monitor on a day-to-day basis, requests that have come from the mayor, the city council, and maybe even staff members. And so, this will give us a little opportunity to provide a much quicker response to your inquiries, and be able to have that information available in a timely manner.
The people of Avalon would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You've deployed a lot of people over to Avalon, and I don't know where else to stay, but hopefully, you do have a minute or two of your day to enjoy Catalina.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that.
Let me ask Scott a question. Hey Scott, just a question for you. Say something happened, are we going to be liable at any time, say, unfortunately, just hypothetically, a fire suppression system doesn't go off in a residential place, and something happens, not water pressure, doesn't activate, is the city liable in any way? Because I know, in the previous years, that when I've done stuff with Edison, that they stated that they weren't responsible for the fire suppression systems. I don't know if the city would be liable if something happened?
There's a specific immunity in the government code that immunizes the city for failure to provide fire suppression services.
Okay.
The state has determined that a city should not be sued for the failure to provide fire suppression services, or the, you know, malfunctioning of a fire suppression services. So we've always argued in every city, that the state law says, this is one thing we're not going to hold cities responsible for, because the state wants to encourage local governments to build and participate in fire suppression services, so they don't get sued for it. So...
Okay.
So, we're okay.
Okay.
I just have one more question for Ben. Ben, is it appropriate to ask you to follow up with Edison? We have a list of questions that have been outstanding for more than a month now. Perhaps before the next council meeting, either answers to the questions, or specific dates, of which we could expect answers to those?
Happy to do so, and I will follow up with Bill Delane on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Oral communications, is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And lady.
This is Jen.
Jen Monroe, Recreation Department. I just have two announcements for the community. One is that our Fourth of July parade, of course, is this Friday, Fourth of July. And just a reminder that if you'd like to get judged for your parade float entry, you can go to Lower Descanso Avenue, right in the middle of town, from 10:30 to 11:30. We'll do special judging there. And then the parade lineup is at 12:30 at the Casino Building. The parade will start, I'm sure, promptly, right at 1 o'clock. And then, secondly, we have a special event the day before that, July 3rd, at Joe Machado Field. We're holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the community, in honor of Supervisor Knobby and Los Angeles County, for the funds that they contributed to the Joe Machado expansion project over the last several years. And that was for taking it from just a softball field, all the way to the multipurpose field that we have today, the courtyard, the building foundations, all the site work that we've done. And so, we're doing a big ribbon-cutting ceremony, there'll be all-American food, and music, and games on the field, and that'll be at 2:30 on Thursday the 3rd.
And that's just open to everyone?
Yeah, come on up. Celebrate.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other communications from the audience? Consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, as announced earlier, we have five, not six, items tonight on the consent calendar. Actions will be coming... Actions will be coming back to you at a later date. So that leaves us with the expenditures totaling approximately $800,000, about 550 of that in warrants, a little over $200,000 in payroll, almost $50,000 in EFT. Next item, we have the designation of a voting delegate and an alternate for the League of California Cities for the annual conference. We have the designation of a delegate to the Board of Directors for the Gateway Cities Council of Government, a submittal to the state classifying our roads, and a proposed Second Amendment to the contract for Dennis Jage, all on the consent calendar this evening.
What's the wishes of the council?
Can I just pull number five? Number nine?
Nine's not the consent.
No, we just go through six, just one through six.
One through six, okay. Okay, just number five and six, please.
Five and six?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion on two through four?
Move staff on two to four.
Second?
I'll second it.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number five, Joe.
And if I could maybe just facilitate the discussion, I'd like to call forward Audrey McDonald, who wrote this staff report. Thank you.
Hello? Did you have questions?
Oh, you know what? I just, I just wanted this to be explained to the people in the audience a little bit. It's a submittal to the State of California Department of Transportation requesting streets and roads in the city of Avalon be included as part of the California road system.
Yes.
What, how would the city benefit from this?
Well, as it was stated in the staff report, the MAP-21, which is a large transportation reauthorization bill, changed the way that the FEMA money will flow to local agencies, specifically as it pertains to roads that are damaged and transportation and transit systems that are damaged during natural disasters. In the past, the city of Avalon has availed itself of FEMA money for things like the casino rockslide when we had that big rainstorm and we had to have the shoreboats move the people, I don't know if you remember that. Some other rockslides, FEMA will actually pay the cost to, the cost to the city for the removal of the rocks, any damage to the road, the cost for the shoreboats, or any other type of thing. The change that MAP-21 that was significant to the city is that in order for us to be able to get that money now, our roads have to be part of the federal highway system. So we, you know, in anticipation of hopefully having a rain this winter, and not hoping that our roads have any problems, we would want to make sure that if we needed it, we would be able to apply for FEMA funding for our roads, which at this point, we would not because of MAP-21. I would also like to state that we had the ferry routes functionally classified in 2010, 2011. So, so this will tie, so this will tie in, it's actually, it's going to be, I know it's on the water, but it's an actual part of the highway system.
Great. Thank you for explaining that.
Sorry to interrupt, Audrey. Could I also have Councilman Sampson have Audrey, there's a map that you provided as part of that?
I brought bigger ones.
Okay, well, that's fine, but I think what I'd like is if you could go through the definitions on the legend of that map?
So, I know, it's probably kind of hard to read, and these, this legend, there's a legend on the right side of the map, and this legend actually comes from the Caltrans. And they're color-coded, so the first one is an interstate, which is blue, brown is other freeways or expressways. I think that's red, is other principal arterials, green is minor arterials, and then, and then for Avalon purposes, we would be using some of the rural designations, which would be major collector, minor collector, and local road. So most of the roads are local except for, well, actually, a lot of the roads are minor collectors. There are the yellow on the map. And then the major collector would be the Pebble Beach Road from kind of out by the wastewater treatment plant all the way to the mole. And the reason that that is considered a major collector is because it is a, the major roadway for our access to essential services, food, power, water, wastewater. Now, that being said, this is just our vision of it. When it goes to Caltrans, Caltrans will then actually make the determination on what the classifications will be. And then there's also a, there was a spreadsheet that was attached that indicated the section, road sections, and it asked for the annual average daily traffic, and that was blank. We've ordered a little actual counter and we will be using it throughout town to get an average.
Great.
Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you very much for explaining that.
You're welcome.
This is a good plan, yeah.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Call for the vote?
I'm sorry. All ayes?
The mover has to vote.
Item number six?
Okay, this is, this is the services which Mr. Jage provides the city, and I just wanted to add that I'm very pleased with Dennis' performance in the city of Avalon, and I think he's worth his weight in gold for what we need him for. He knows everything about building, construction, and development, and I just wanted to say that I'm very happy about Mr. Jage filling in this position. And that was my only comment for that.
His weight in gold's about $3 million.
$5 million.
He's put on some weight.
Oh, he must have put on some weight. Some move staff.
Oh, you moved?
Yeah.
Second?
I second.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, under public hearings this evening, you have two. The first one, item number seven, is the fee schedule. You'll likely be tired of seeing this. This is the third time this council has gone through this document. It's the second of two required public hearings. So, at this point, you know, this establishes what our fees are for services each year. They're modest increases that aren't normally allowed. We also, it's an opportunity for us to revisit those, as you know from our past discussions, and adjust those that need to be. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, if not, open the public hearing.
Public hearing, any comments from the audience?
Open the public hearing.
I opened the public hearing. Yes.
Rudy Bilch, 346 Las Lomas. Just, I understand, I think there was an announcement in the paper, what, about a month ago, that the city was conducting an audit of all of its finances? And it would seem to me that before you start on looking at new fees, what was the result of this audit? Can we tell? I mean, has there been any findings of money that had not been collected before or anything that might change your thoughts about fees?
I believe the question relates to the financial statements that the auditors provide. Is that the audit that you're?
No, I think the contract.
Defined audit.
The $25,000 audit, or they were going to look at sales tax and that thing?
Oh, Hindaliter Dalmas. Hindaliter Dalmas. Okay, sorry. Hindaliter Dalmas specifically examines sales tax data. That is their niche. They do not take a look at cities' fee schedules and examine them for effectiveness. So, what Hindaliter Dalmas tries to provide are the holes out there in the community wherein either a business is under-reporting, that's usually what happens, or maybe you're not aware of the significance of a business to the economy because you had no idea they contributed so much. That's what HDL does. This is wholly separate from that. This is, you know, what we need to charge in order to recoup our expenses as part of a delivery of service.
Right. So that audit did not include?
Does not take into account these fees whatsoever.
Any incomes that the city is entitled to? The cruise ships or anybody else?
HDL solely focuses on sales tax data, and then that's their area of expertise because they examine business sectors and types of services, and they know what a city should expect from that type of business normally, such that when they get the data from the state, they can say, well, it seems to be that's an underperformance based upon the size of community and the type of traffic we would expect. And so you might need to follow up with them on that. Or, as I was talking about earlier, Scott gives a great example of the city of Cerritos and how they had no idea that the Olive Garden was the number-one sales tax producer in their community until they had that data examined. Why is that significant? Well, you examine those relationships a little bit differently after you know that they're supporting you in that manner. But, long-winded way, it's not attached to this fee schedule.
No, I understand it's not attached to the fee schedule, but if an audit begins to show that there's something missing in the city's collection system, such as mortgage fees or cruise ship fees, harbor use fees, et cetera.
We do have auditors.
That was not included?
Not in that, but, sorry, this is complicated. We have a separate auditor that examines city taxes. And, yes, we do, Brown and Duffy, I believe, is the name of the firm, if I remember correctly, and they examine cities', city taxes that we should be collecting and expecting to collect, and they look at those. Hindaliter Dalmas only looks at sales taxes. So we have two different auditors looking at those type of things to make sure we're whole.
And what's the result of that?
From time to time, they do come to us and say, hey, you need to follow up with this business, we've uncovered this, and it seems that they should be, they're doing X and they should be doing Y and follow up, or they'll issue a letter and we'll...
Any magnitudes that would result in different thinking about the fee schedule?
Not in my tenure here that I've seen, that I've come across an auditor finding that would make me want to change something on the fee schedule. However, we spent the last three meetings discussing what was involved with particular fees, and in some cases, we did make some adjustments.
Okay, really, my thought here is that when the city just across the board increases fees, it's an open game for every other business and everybody else in town, which then is like that House of Cards or the Domino's, costs are going up to the public, whether it be your rental fees or whatever it happens to be. Anyhow, thank you for the explanation.
Any other comment from the audience? Your motion?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, like to close the public hearing, thank you.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, call for the vote?
All ayes.
I'm going to open the...
Right, so this puts us into our second public hearing of the evening, also related to fees. These are the grease collection, trash collection, saltwater, and sewer fees that the council annually adopts to, by resolution, to place on the property tax roll. You'll note that the fees are identical to the last time that they were adopted, there is no increase as part of this. So, these are how we attempt to recoup, I guess is the best way I would say, some of the charges associated with these services.
And the sole purpose of this, of these resolutions is to allow the city to recover these, they're all property-based fees, is to allow the city to recover these property-based fees on the tax records that the county sends out for the property taxes. If this does not pass, then these fees are collected by the people in the accounting department that have to send out many, many, handbills, and your costs go up exponentially. So this is a cost-saving thing to have the county put these on the bills rather than have our staff do it.
Public comment? Yes, Eli?
I would just hope that next year that we consider these fees well in advance of this timeframe so that we can, if we need to adjust them, we can adjust them in a timely manner to get them included on the property tax, because I think this will be, there was a fee increase last year on the salt and sewer and trash, there wasn't one year before. We're just going further and further behind on those enterprise funds, we're getting bigger, bigger holes, and we can't go on that way. But that being said, I will...
Well, then, just real quick, for that process to happen then, for us to seriously look at those fees, how far up and how far in advance we need to start working on that? What do you think?
We're going to be talking about that in short order as part of the public financing and Prop 218 discussions we're going to have with you.
Oh, great, okay.
And I also will note that Warren Diven is coming back at the first meeting in August to do the second half of the presentation on public financing.
Can we get an email version of that presentation?
Yes.
Please, ahead of time?
Yes.
Thanks.
That's the same meeting that Alan Lowenthal will also be here. Are we sure we want that on the same meeting?
Yeah, that's when he can make it. And he's going to stay the night. He already told me his wife and him are planning on staying over.
Any other comments? Close the public hearing?
Moved and adopt the resolution?
Second? All second? Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, General Business Mayor, you have five items this evening. Item number nine. So, I just wanted to have this discussion this evening. We're facing some tough situations, as we know, related to freshwater. And we are, as a city, looking at all types of options, trying to figure out, you know, for better or for worse, the community, which way we should go, how we should be involved. And so, as your, as your professional staff member, I see it as my role to participate in discussions as I deem them appropriate, not as a voting member of the council, of course, I'm not, but as somebody who brings information back to you so that you have that information at your disposal to help you formulate policy. And with a newer council, it's become clear to me as well that I perhaps needed to maybe better clarify the type of government that we operate under and the role of the city manager. So I prepared this staff report such that we could kind of start with some building blocks, and one being that we operate under the council manager form of government. You are elected, you, the council, not me, by the people to set the policy here. I am appointed by you, sit at your pleasure, to implement the policy, and I'm the "how" component. So that's the council manager form of government that we have. So as such, you adopt a job description, that is, the city manager job description. And that job description is such where I am charged with running the daily operation of the city. You guys, of course, are the group that determines the policy, but you leave it to me to determine how to implement that policy and how best to run the daily operation of the city. So from time to time, I need to make decisions as to what types of meetings to participate in, what type of calls to take, what type of resources to reach out to, such that I can be in a position to provide you with the data that I think you need in order to make good policy decisions. I'm looking here tonight, just so that we don't have any ambiguity as to your role, my role, what my position should be. This relates, of course, to coming back to you to report on options for freshwater, but it also impacts everything else we do in the city, too. It could be something related to the sewer, it could be something related to tree trimming, whatever the sexy local government topic is... Whatever the sexy local government topic is of the day, it could be something along those, those lines. But that's, that's what I'm here for and that's, and that's what I want to do. And I just, I just wanted to put this out there so that we were all clear that, you know, that, that was my role. I didn't want to have to be in the position to pull you guys from time to time if, you know, I should be going to something or participating in this or participating in that. The reason why I brought this to your attention is I did receive a call from the supervisor's office recently wherein they'd received a call from council member Sampson and he was wondering why I was involved in a particular item and expressed his concern because he had concerns about that particular topic. And I well understand and appreciate that you guys are not going to be united on topics. You're going to be divided on topics and, and I respect that. But I think that I need to be able to bring you back information on an item that could be of negative impact to the community or positive impact to the community, whatever that is, just so you have the basis to make that decision. So when, when I received that call from the supervisor's office, I thought, you know, I probably need to put this on the agenda so that we all are clear as to the type of government that we operate under, what my role is and how I should behave going forward. Because I believe that from what I've gone through, from the government code, the California government code, the municipal code, my job description, it's clear as to, as to how I should be doing this, but I just want us all to acknowledge that such that I can, can continue to serve you as best I possibly can.
Yeah, and definitely in support of this, but I wrote, not too long ago, I remember saying to you, since we are new, there's, there's oftentimes, we don't even know what all the options are.
Right.
And it's nice for you to say, "Oh, but have you considered this?" Because maybe I don't know because it's something that's been done somewhere else. So I understand that need for, for attending and learning as well because we can't be out there attending and learning and, and our job isn't to run the day-to-day operation of the city. So, thank you for the clarification.
And then just if I could add one more thing, it is my role to provide you with the tools that you need to do your job and, and I'd be remiss if I wasn't doing that. And so to that end, we are arranging for in-person, new and newer council member training from the League of California Cities. They're actually going to come out here. It's, it's a mayor of a community over town, Rancho Palos Verdes, and he is going to be at your disposal to go through questions you may have. He's got a presentation to go through. He's, he's been with the League of California Cities for a while, so he's well-versed in this type of thing. It just occurred to me that that might be helpful. I'm also going to be giving you some additional written material to review as well. And that's all I have.
And I think if we go back to the first meeting in May, we adopted a policy about council city manager relations and that fairly clearly laid out our responsibilities, his responsibilities, how we interact with both the electorate and local government and county and state government. I think if we just review that, that will help us.
And I guess if I could make a request, I, I guess I, I don't forget why I put this item on. I'm looking for your, from your direction so that I can, A, continue following up on all types of options for the city related to freshwater, not setting policy but bringing options back to you for consideration. And then anything else going forward, maybe not related to freshwater, but everything else such that you always have what you need to make some type of policy decision. And then thirdly, just trying to make sure there's no ambiguity as to what it is I should be pursuing. So those, those are the three things I'm looking for from you guys tonight.
Cindy, I can't believe you haven't said anything.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
My, my perspective is that if at any time the city is invited to participate in conversations that may positively or negatively impact the city, we should without a doubt participate. And that, the delicate at that table should be determined by the city manager, whether it be the city manager himself, another member of staff, he so chooses or by request, one of us as a council member to participate with him or to participate in, on his behalf if he can't participate in something. From my perspective, that is what his job is, is to be the seat at the table whenever that invitation arrives for whatever reason. It could be talking about bringing a pageant to the city. It could be talking about ways to sell freshwater. We, as a city council, I'm hoping tonight, this would have been part of my council member report, will not leave this room until we set a date and a time for us to finalize our We are running in different directions. We've got different agenda items and we need to come together as a team because the way in which that we're handling or attempting to handle the city's business is very confusing to city staff. And it's also very confusing to me as a council member when I'm approached by my constituents on the street saying, "What are you guys doing?" And I don't have a clue what they're talking about. So we've, we've got to work together as a team. We are a team. At the end of the day, I fully understand we might be a three-person vote or a four-person vote, depending on what it may be, but we are a team up here and we are elected as a team. So we need to finalize our goals and move forward in that direction. This is about the fifth council meeting that we've had now and each of the five meetings, we've talked about what our role is. And we've developed or in the process of developing this policies and procedures manual which helps guide us and helps us understand what our role is. But I got to say, I'm getting really tired of talking about it. I mean, we need to take a step back and realize what our role is. And our role is certainly not to manage or micromanage our city staff. Our role is to set the policy in which directs them to do the job that we have hired them to do. So I, I don't want to spend a good portion of my time trying to figure out why I can't get a hold of Ben for two days because he's working on something. I mean, we, we've, that all falls in alignment with our goals. So I'm hoping that we can realize what our role is and our role is to set the policy. It's not to micromanage the city staff. That's Ben's job. And lastly, I recognize that the representatives off-island, such as our supervisor's office, the congressmen and representatives, are so critical to the successes of our community. They, they love Catalina. We all know that. We knew that going into this position, that we have so much support off-island. And I would like us just to remember that we should harbor positive and open communication with these offices. And, and the way in which we communicate with them, if, if we have some serious concerns, we need to come together as a council and we need to talk about those concerns and then we need to convey them to off-island representation for us. And I think we need to do that with a consensus of the council. And again, that may only be three of five of us, but we need a consensus of our council. And, and Joe, I'm, I'm definitely not intending to come down on you for this particular one, but I want to say that I was in a vehicle and I thought it was the greatest thing since sliced bread that Ben was invited to participate in this conversation. So I think even had we have talked about what we want Ben to be involved in or not, we probably could have had a conversation and said, "Well, you know, maybe we'll agree to disagree." But, you know, that, that going off-island was, you know, was kind of disheartening for, for some of us. So I'm just hoping that we can learn to work together and maybe finalize our goals. And that's it.
Any comment? Anyone?
Well, in line with Ms. Cindy, we were presented with four dates for possible next goal thing. Wednesdays appear not to be a good day. Why don't we just do it before the next council meeting that we all know is going to be on the 15th?
Sure.
Like 4:30 or something like that.
Sure. I'm okay. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I'm sure that'd be fine.
It's, it's two weeks from today.
Change 16 to the 15.
No, no, just do the goal meeting, have the goal meeting prior to the next council meeting, which is the 15th. It'll be Tuesday, two weeks from today, in the afternoon.
Do you think we need an hour and a half or do you think we need to, more time than that?
I think we could probably talk through as much time as we allocate. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to give as much time as we need. It depends upon other people that have, I don't have as many responsibilities as other people do, so.
Do we want to shoot for an hour and a half?
I'm, I'm good, I'm, I'm okay with that.
4:30?
At 4:30?
Plan to spend a long time that evening. There's a lot on the agenda already for the 15th.
Well, we'll be 4:30 to 6:00, we'll do that and then we'll do the regular stuff.
We'll call out for pizza? Okay.
4:30?
Yes.
And, and in regards to what Ben was talking about, freshwater, I think what would be very helpful for the council and probably for the community is to understand the role that each of us play, the role that Edison plays in providing freshwater to the island, the role that we play as governing the city of Avalon, that's part of Avalon, that's part of Catalina, 76 quarter miles. And I'm not sure that we all understand where the responsibilities lie.
Can do that.
Can I have clarification on the goal setting?
Yeah.
Councilman Rolson. So that's just one meeting, so we just going to do it one at a time?
Whatever it takes. I mean, it seems like Wednesday's not a good day, but we're all have calendar Tuesdays for council meetings. So maybe if we just, the next couple of council meetings, we just stop, start early and get it all the way, get it done. Except for poor Scott has a problem.
No, what I want to make certain though is, is the major import of this item, as I understand it, is about the freshwater and we're sitting here, we have Edison telling us that we don't have, we're going into stage two. And so we're looking at wells, we're looking at D-Saw and we're getting emails today from the state about, and just right before the meeting, on, on a D-Saw. Is it the council's direction for city staff, Ben, our office, Audra, whoever, to pursue all option, all water options available for Avalon and bring those options to the council?
Yeah.
We'd like, we'd like to understand that so that we can just go out there and kind of do an all of the above attack on what water can we, can, what, what options can we bring to Avalon, knowing obviously that Edison is the water provider, but as a city and the government, government entity, we have certain levers and leverages that we can push that are important and we're just looking at these options because we, we do want to pursue everything, but want to make certain that council's on board with that. Where if there's certain options that you don't want us to pursue, let us know and we will not devote resources to that.
I think it's important that any option you bring to us has a timeline for implementation because there's stuff that can get done that's not going to do anything at all to force day two, three, and four.
Right.
Unless we start seeding the clouds tomorrow.
Right.
We, may I speak?
Of course.
We, we need to start documenting these options, too, and then finding out how viable they are and then start dissecting them and figuring out if they would be more of a liability than an asset to us. And we need to understand, do we just want a short-term fix? Because if so, let's just bring in barges. If we want a long-term fix, I'm talking more than five years, we need to start thinking about some serious decision-making. But it's really hard for us to do when Edison is sitting in front of us and they can't even figure out what to do with three camps down at the West End to Catalina. I mean, that is a short-term fix that they can't even figure out. They can't even tell us in five minutes, you know, what they're doing. And they did promise us in an email that they would barge in the freshwater and I have, and I have that email saved on my computer and I'd be happy to send it to Mr. Randy Collins, West End Operations for Edison.
Their comment on barging is based for all the island needs. If we went to, you know, if we drain the reservoir, they're obligated to bring water over. They're not obligated to bring water to the island just to serve the West End's needs. That's what the tariff says.
Ah.
And the bad thing is is when they barge water over here, we get to pay for that.
Yeah.
We're the only water utility, the second water utility Edison operates. So they have a very good handle on what it costs to provide service to us and they go to the PUC and they recover that cost. That's why we're paying two cents a gallon in the summertime. I mean, we can create a new reservoir over here, it's just going to cost us a gazillion dollars, us being the ratepayers, because there's only like 1,800 ratepayers on the island, they spread the cost over. You know, this is, this is not a thing where money coming out of the sky to pay for this. We, because they are a company, a privately-held company, a stock company, that the user, us, has to pay for it unless you have a developer come along, like Hamilton came along and built the D-Saw plant. If you had a developer come along and you have for the deep-water well in Middle Ranch, having them pay for it so we, the ratepayers, don't have to pay for it. If we, the ratepayers, had to pay the $2 million for the cost of that well, our rates in town would go up about $170,000 a year, which would be amongst all 1,700 of us. And it's just, it's a cost of, it's basic economics. They can barge water over here, but if you saw in last week's Islander, Coffee was saying it was...
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars for 255 gallons? So that's, we can't do the math right now. But, I mean, it's solvable by dollars, but I don't want to pay any more to Edison each month for water.
That's why we need a long-term fix and we can't be back in the position that we're in right now in five years. We drill that well and we're going to be right back in the same position we're in right now.
Kind of solutions.
Okay, Scott was just saying that the state is offering to help us out with our desalination plan. We need to quadruple the output of our, our desalination plan and we're going to be right back here, sitting at the same, having the same discussion five years from now when that well dries up, too, and it fills up with salt.
Well, and I guess we could kind of talk about the meeting we were in the other day with Edison, some of the gentlemen that were here, of course, the island company, conservancy, and what's the, well, Joe Cal is one and the other gentleman, John?
John Mack.
John Mack was there and I'm sure you've had conversations with him before. And we were talking about the water thing and just to let you know, and because I wasn't really ready to say much yet because we've only met once, but I've put together a little group of local people that are very interested in reclamation. And so we're, we met last week, we're meeting again Thursday at 11:00. And it's neat because this group of, this group of, they all happen to be men, are, first thing they say we need to define, and it was, kind of came out in that meeting also, was we need to talk about what's the quantity of water we want and what's the quality of water we want. So these gentlemen are going to work at that on a reclamation standpoint and go from there. But when it came to the well and the discussion of the well, I was, you know, because, yes, we all, there seems to be a little skepticism or cynicism when it comes to maybe the island company or Edison. However, I was very encouraged because John Mack was there and he is very concerned about the island community and, oh, maybe you disagree, but I felt very comfortable that, that proceeding with the digging of the, of the test well, that they will be, and you can probably speak to it better, Ben, but that they will be testing and monitoring that for a couple of weeks when that happens. There's still a lot of regulatory stuff, but that is one option. And I, and I was encouraged from a conservancy standpoint, and if I heard him correctly, was that if it does look like it can pump continually 300 acre feet, let's say, okay? He's saying, "No, but we don't, we don't zap that whole 300 acre feet. We, we cut it back so that we're not, you know, so we don't drain it. So maybe we cut that in half or whatever."
I think, yeah, his concern was largely for the riparian habitat downstream and he made it clear in that meeting that the conservancy would have to be satisfied that there are concerns about damaging that ecological system would not be, would not come to fruition. So that was, that was his whole point. And, right, perhaps taking only a small portion of the yield, not all the yield, if that was a way that it worked, but just...
Right, right. So, so I felt like you had a, we had a local watchdog as well as any other regulatory agencies, what they're going to have to go through. So it's kind of promising for me and, but that's just one. Reclamation is another. And I know, Oli, you know, you, you seem to say you want to proceed at looking at creating our own water district. I know that's out, out there now. So, and there are other people in the community that are interested. I know you are, Joe. You say, you know, "We've got to get our water back from Edison." So those, if those things can happen, because we do only have so much staff and we don't have money for lots of consultants, we may have to start to do some preliminary stuff in these different areas and we all come back together and go, "Hey, this is what we're finding out, kids. Where do we want to proceed? Where's the priority? To which one of these people want to go first?" Because hopefully through these little committees, we'll be able to say, "Well, this is a three-year project, you know, but what is the, you know, what can we do now?" And, you know, you talk about the dredging and whatever and I think those things, we need to beat them up and see what floats to the top and, and I think we're all dedicated to answering this water... to answering this water problem, one way or another, for the future of Avalon, not just a fix. You know, if it rains, we're not stopping, and I, you know, said that last week, last time, so...
And I guess the other thing that I didn't put in here, which I should put in here, is that we really need, I know we're not trying to over-meeting you guys, but it really kind of calls for a water study session in the near future.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So that's, you know, Denise, if we can figure out a way to also schedule that on top of everything else...
Three thirty instead of forty.
No, that's going to be too long of a night.
But it needs to happen, because we have to all start talking about this and coming back and providing you with, you know, here's some things we found, here's some options, what's the policy?
Right, right. Okay, where are we?
So do you feel that you've gotten adequate direction?
I think if I got a motion from you guys that you would vote on, I'd feel like I had direction.
So how would you like that? Would you? A motion to approve, staff recommend, staff recommendation?
ABNC.
Well, okay, I mean, I think you could say it a number of ways, but direct me to continue any and all pursuits that relate to additional potential for freshwater, other issues and initiatives that either positively or negatively impact the community, such that there's no ambiguity as to what I'm doing.
So moved.
There we go. Okay, I guess I'll second that one.
Public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Public comment?
Nope.
Call for the vote? Okay.
Cindy? All eyes?
I don't want to vote tonight.
Okay, next item under general business is item number ten. This is another installment of your Avalon City Council Policies Manual. Am I moving, oh, okay, sorry. Tonight, we're bringing forth compensation and rules of regulations regarding payment, as well as the rules of order for the council and committee meetings. These are draft policies, we're open, of course, to whatever your input for any revisions are. It is our goal to bring back one more installment to you at the next meeting, along with any cleanups that you have recommended along the way, such that each of you can have a spiffy little binder at the dais for your reference.
Spiffy?
Spiffy, absolutely, and Jordan and Scott spearheaded this effort, so if either one of them would like to add anything, please do.
Yeah, let me just, when we come back, we can always supplement and add new chapters or new policies as we come. Tonight's policies or the first chapters, it would be, it would be section four, actually, deals with compensation, and this basically is incorporating state law, which says that the amount that you get per month, which is $300, and then you're also entitled to reimbursement of meetings that you go to for your actual cost and expenses. And what I've tried to do in the policy, Jordan and I have tried to do, is to set forth meetings that a council person would regularly attend where you don't need special permission for asking to be reimbursed for expenses. These are also in the budget. So we're talking about if you want to go to the League of California Cities Meeting, the Contract Cities, the Association Meetings, the Gateway Cog Meetings, those are meetings where council members can go, you don't need to ask for special permission for reimbursement, but state law does suggest and actually require that for other meetings that you get some kind of permission beforehand. So for instance, if you are going up to Sacramento, it'd be good to get a council approval before you go to those meetings, if they're not like league meetings, because there may be something, something special, that's going to be a cost, does the city want to spend that cost? So that's what the first set of rules does. Again, certain meetings are just automatically okay, and the others, you ask for permission. So we can stop there, and I can ask if there's any questions about the rules for compensation and reimbursement for meetings.
I have a question. So, so the reimbursement or compensation, do we, does this dovetail into our city policies that say you either get a per diem, or it's, you know, you don't, you can't get reimbursed for alcoholic beverages? How does that all fit in with there? If I don't need, can I drink?
There is a...
How it used to be in the old days?
There is a separate policy that is much more in-depth, that deals with the type of travel expenses that you are entitled to.
So those will be provided to us as well?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Good question, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Is there an annual CPI increase for our...
No, it's the state, it's...
No, I'm just talking about our wages here.
Our wages have to be, can only be raised in an election that we run.
We might get a dollar a year.
No, it won't be raised in an election that council members are running for.
Oh, okay.
And can't do it, so we're just...
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, it's three hundred, three hundred, this way, three hundred, that way.
Okay.
So that's that. So then the second one deals with the actual running of meetings in terms of setting forth the policies that the mayor as the...
Chair.
As the chair, I was going to say the, the person in charge with administering the meetings. We use Rosenberg's Rules of Order, not Robert's Rules of Order, Robert's Rules of Order are, you know, 500 pages long, and there's three different versions of them. Rosenberg's was designed by a council member and a judge that dealt with five-member city councils for rules, and it's basically, it's what the league recommends, and basically, these policies just go through the policies of, again, the type of motions that council members can make, the decorum in terms of how meetings will be run, the kind of choreography of a meeting, in terms of council member discussion, motions, comments from the public. We have some general statements in here that are consistent with the Brown Act in terms of recognizing that people have the right to speak, that we can't criticize them, we can't cut them off if they're criticizing us, only if they get loud and obnoxious and disrupt the meeting can we throw them out. And so these are, again, policies that are consistent with the Brown Act, but encourage public participation, encourage people to come, and the one thing I added a little bit, which a lot of cities have done now, is we've, recognition that we want people to talk, we want to hear their ideas, and so we should not be criticizing the speakers themselves. If you have an issue with their ideas, comment on the ideas, but not the speakers. Any questions on this aspect of it?
Cindy?
Surprisingly, I have no comments on these two. They were very well-written.
I just have one, seven point four point nine, page three. After the council has taken an official position on an issue, all official correspondence should reflect this position, council position, period. Council members who disagree with the position taken by the council are free to prepare correspondence on such issues, identifying the information or opinions as solely as their own. No staff support, city expense, or city letterhead will be used in such an instance.
Yeah, this recognizes that you have the First Amendment right, but once the city council votes, city resources are only for that one position.
Thank you. Jordan, Scott?
Is there a motion to, well, can you give us, so is the direction of council that these policies are fine for incorporation into the policy manual?
Sure. I like them, I like them a lot. Thank you for bringing this up, by the way. Very helpful.
You want a motion?
You didn't ask for one.
I just asked. Did you want a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second? Comments? Call for the vote?
Good job. All eyes?
Okay, Mayor, the next three items under general business all relate to planning, so I'm going to ask our planning director, Amanda Cook, to come forward, please. Number eleven is the appointment of four commissioners to the Planning Commission Board. I know that you probably have a few things to say on this, as you've been interviewing candidates, so call forward Amanda, perhaps ask for you to make your recommendations. Planning commissioners, as the mayor, you nominate candidates, of course, your colleagues have to ratify those nominations to fill the vacancies.
Okay.
As you know, we have four vacancies, we have three incumbents, and we're filling Mrs. Cassidy's vacancy. The mayor, I think, has spoken to all the candidates, and she's going to be making a recommendation as to which candidates she wants to reinter or re-up, or fill the vacancy left by Councilwoman Cassidy.
Thank you. Yes, I did have an opportunity to talk to all of the nine candidates, and I really want to thank them all for stepping forward. They were all enthusiastic and all willing to serve our community, which is very great. However, I can only pick four, and I will present them to you, and then you all can do with as you please. In kind of looking, I wanted to kind of maintain some balance between the old and the new, and we've had some people that have been there for a long time with a lot of experience and expertise, and have the city of Avalon at heart and follow our rules very well, I believe. We also have some new people that have been on the council, on the commission for only a couple of years. So without further ado, I would like to welcome back Bruce Furtig, who has been the chair forever, Chuck Martin, Jerry Dunn, and the next newbie to be Douglas Lord. So those are mine, and open for comment.
The, I'm sorry, filling my position, the two-year commitment, who were you slating for that?
Oh, did I have to do it in that way? I guess so.
Well, there is one two-year term commitment to fill, and the rest would be four-year appointments.
So that would be Doug, yes.
Scott, can we go over individually this, on these, or do we have to go by her list, or?
You can either vote the slate up or down, or you can take each individual member individually. There's, you know, there's no set rules to that, so it's the council's prerogative to decide how they want to vote on this, whether it's the slate, whether you want to do Noah's Ark, and do two by two, or individually.
Personally, I'd just like to go with each individual one.
Sure. Let's go for it.
Or it's up to you, what would you guys, I mean, everybody has a say, so, you know?
Go for it, go for it.
Go for the individual ones?
Yeah. Okay, let's start with Bruce Furtig.
Hey, before we, before we do that, though, any members of the public would like to comment upon the proposed slate? Seeing none, okay.
I'll move concurrence with the mayor over Bruce Furtig.
Concurrence on Bruce, you said?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I would second Bruce.
All, any other comments?
We're just voting on Bruce.
Yeah, Bruce is fine.
This is new. I'm used to the last four, or the last four appointments being you have two positions and two people apply, so this is all new.
Probably the last 100 years, but...
I think Bruce does agree, Doug.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Comments?
Let's see. No, I don't think so, I think this, this letter here actually explains that Bruce qualifies as a full-time resident of Avalon, so that was the only thing that I could think of that could be a holdback, but yeah, this is fine with me.
So shall we call for the vote? Is that how we're going to do this?
Yep.
All eyes.
Next person I had was Chuck Martin. Charles Martin.
I'll move concurrence with the mayor's recommendation.
Should I second that? I'll second that.
Discussion? I wonder if all these people are sitting at home with each other's seats.
I am.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote?
All eyes.
Third, Jerry Dunn.
I'll move to concur.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this his first year, second year?
I think he's been two years.
Two years?
Two years.
Oh, I'm sorry. He was filling a position that was vacated, I believe, by Jessica Herzog.
So Jessica? So he's only been there six months, is that correct? Because I was understanding he was there for two years. Okay. Well, in that one, I can't, we, how was Michael? Michael, was Michael good? I like Michael. Michael Potts. I think he'd be great, he put in for it. We've still got two positions to fill, right?
Well, we have a motion on the third position.
Yeah.
There's a motion.
Who's that, Michael who?
Michael Potts.
Oh.
Just a thought. That I'd like to see him get in there one way or another.
Well, it's been moved and seconded for Jerry.
Okay.
So let's call for the vote, right?
I just want to make sure I'm clear, the first two already that you've put in, Bruce and Chuck, are for the four-year terms?
Yeah.
Okay, so Jerry Dunn is also for the four-year term.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we're all clear.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, call for the vote.
We have four eyes, Marshall Sampson, Cassidy and Olson, and one, no Hernandez.
And next up is Doug Lord. They're only two years.
Again, I'd still like to see, right, we have a couple of good candidates out there, and I think Michael being one, being on the council for years, and without even that, with that being said, even Ralph was on the committee at one time too, and he was one, right? And I guess so down the line, I guess Doug was also a member of the council years ago.
Yeah.
I would like to take a good look at that, consideration for that.
I, when I was interviewing Doug, I was, I was, I asked everybody the same questions, and all I needed to, with a thing that hit me the best, and everybody was talking about enforcing the rules and enforcing the ordinance and enforcing the codes, they all said that that was great, but he was the only one that talked about planning, about looking at the future and looking at some of the things that are on the books, and really trying to be forward-thinking, and so that's, that's what sold me.
My perspective is I would, and I, I'm sorry, I guess I should have said two years versus four years for the previous votes, and this is all new, so I'm learning, but I would really like to see Michael participate as a planning commissioner. He's, he's been involved, he's willing to serve, he's been participative in a lot of the potential development discussions that we've already had. When we're talking about forward-thinking, you know, we do have a couple currently sitting in the positions as planning commissioners that are forward-thinking, and I'll certainly give Lisa some, Lisa Lovell, some credit, that she's very passionate about, you know, following the rules and looking forward, and, you know, where do we want to go? I think Michael would be a valuable asset to the planning commission.
It was a tough decision, so there's no...
And Doug has so much to offer, but I would love to harness the energy that Doug has into some of the committees that we're talking about, and potentially putting him as a lead on one of the committees.
Okay, there, let's, well, and all, since I'm nominating him, I'll just say, I'll make a motion for Doug Lord. Is there a second?
First second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other further discussion? Let's call... Let's call.
That's not quick.
Well, you're just not, come on.
Well, it's...
Get up to the table.
I agree, it's the things that are being said about Michael. I spent two years with Michael here, I spent a lot of time with Michael at the hospital board. I haven't served Doug. I'm kind of like up in the air, I mean, I, I guess I'll defer to your interview with him, and I will go along with the motion.
And the other thing, it's just as there's places for Doug in our community and committees, there's also lots of places for, for Michael, in community services, and hospital, and it's just, so, I mean, it is, it is, okay. But it's been moved and seconded, let's call for the vote.
Three eyes, Mayor Marshall, Councilmember Sampson and Olson, and two noes, Councilmember Cassidy Hernandez. And this was for Doug Lord, correct? Because we had a motion and a second on Michael Ponce too.
Welcome aboard.
I had a motion for Michael.
Thank you for serving the community.
What's her appointment?
I just want to make sure I got the right vote.
So, we left the motion hanging?
Okay. Item number 12 is an ordinance establishing emergency shelters in town. This is required pursuant to state law, and I'd ask Amanda just to give a brief update on this matter. Thanks, Amanda.
As Ben said, this is one of the changes that was mandated in order for us to get our housing element certified by the state. We had someone ask the question, currently, there are two of our churches in town, the community church and the Bible church now known as the Singing Waters Church, that provide, that will step up to the plate and provide emergency housing for families or individuals that need it overnight or a couple of days. And the question was asked, how does this change in the ordinance affect those two ongoing efforts? The Singing Waters Church is on Catalina, it is not in the commercial or special commercial zone, which is where this ordinance is going to allow emergency shelters. We talked this over with the city attorney, and we found that their activity is an existing grandfather use, and so this ordinance would not preclude them from continuing those efforts to serve our community. We wanted to make sure that by adopting this ordinance, it wasn't somehow going to prohibit them from continuing to provide that service when needed. So, otherwise, this is just, ordinance will allow the, if someone wants to, needs to, or wants to establish a new emergency shelter, the zoning code will only allow that to happen in this commercial or special commercial zone. So, if you have any other questions, let me know.
But that doesn't really, but it's not saying that the city has to be able to provide a homeless, be prepared to provide...
No, no. The state law only says you have to allow it somewhere in your city as a, as a use that you would allow. It doesn't mean that we're going to open one, it doesn't mean that we're mandating that someone has to open one, it just says if someone wanted to open one, these are the proper places for it to happen.
And that they can do it over to the counter, so that there's no, the state law says that there's, you decide where you're going to put emergency shelters, and if you meet the criteria in the code and in state law, you can get a permit over the counter, you don't need to go to the planning commission for approval of it.
May I comment?
Sure.
I, I believe that we could probably use an emergency shelter, since we are an island in the middle of the ocean, and matter of fact, just a couple of weeks ago, there were some kids that missed their boat, and, and they had nowhere to go, so I did refer them to the church, but it was, it was late, there wasn't, it wasn't a good time to call the church when it's too late like that. But basically, they missed their boat on the, on the late boat. And I think we're going to get people from time to time that, that need a shelter like that, not necessarily just homeless people, but there'll be different situations where maybe some, someone might have a problem within their home, and they, and they won't be able to stay there, so they, so they'll have to go somewhere else, or, or someone will miss their boat, or we'll have somebody homeless. In a lot of countries, there are people that, there are cities that have beds, just like hostels, they call them. I just think there might be a need for this into the future. I mean, I, I see people on, on a kind of a regular basis, but not that often that could use a place, like, it's usually a bed, it's not for an extended amount of time, like this says, six months would be the longest that you could actually be on it, which I was thinking that's a little bit long, but right now, the churches are picking this up, and we really have no remedy for this, at this time, so I think it'd be a good thing to have, to be able to do if we ever found a place, and we had the money, and we found a strong enough need for it, so. That being said, that's my only comment.
Is there a motion to?
Public.
What? Oh, gosh, darn it. Public comment. Denise, would you do me a big favor? When you write these up, just put "public comment" on each of those, until I get the hang of it. Okay. Public comment?
Moved to waive and introduce, to waive all further reading of orders to the City Council of the city of Avalon, amended in Avalon Municipal Code Section 9-6.202 and 9-6.302, adding Chapter 9-16 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding emergency shelters.
I'll second.
Comment? Call for the vote?
All eyes.
Okay, item number 13 is the consideration of an encroachment permit for outdoor dining at the Avocado Grill at 120 Sumner Avenue. I believe that you have the application attached to the agenda item. This is for tables and chairs outside the grill on the sidewalk on the south side of Sumner Avenue, and again, Amanda can provide you with an update on this one if you need that.
I'm going to abstain for financial interest.
Again, this is just at the new Avocado Grill, which is at the Glenmore Plaza, they had requested that they be allowed to put some tables and chairs outside. We went down and measured the area, and as required, their entry and exit door opens out onto the sidewalk, so they're already impacting a certain area of the sidewalk anyway, so we're recommending that you approve the area between their doors and the small amount of space behind their door, I think it's three feet deep, that they'd be allowed to use that for tables and chairs for the Avocado Grill. It is an encroachment permit, and it's also going to result in a lease, so they will actually be renting this space from the city. And John is here, if you have any questions of the applicant.
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Is that three tables, Amanda, going there, or four?
I think you're talking about 20-inch tables, John.
So, it says 20-inch tables and chairs too, also.
I think three in the middle and one behind the doors, was proposed.
May I comment?
Sure.
Can we just clarify, how many seats will be at each table? Two at each table, really?
I heard that you're going to apply for an ABC license. Is this space going to be covered by it?
We haven't really gotten that far with that yet. There's some things that we have to get through before we can even apply for it. I'm really not even thinking about it right now, so that'll be something, probably be a year down the road. But if that happens, you know, I have my previous experience with the alcohol beverage control, it'd have to be enclosed, so I don't know if that's doable there, because I don't know how far you guys allow us to encroach on the sidewalk. It would be something that would be a bonus for the business, but I just don't know if it's attainable through the city.
A question for Amanda. Did Fire Department have any comment on this project, or were they notified at all?
Yeah, Mike looked at this, and I think he agreed that since the doors are already impacting that part of the sidewalk, it's already affecting pedestrian control. This is on Sumner, where it's next to the street, it's not down at the pedestrian walkway, so there's still full street access in that area.
And there's a green bench across from where you're open, right?
Right. It's in front of the bench, and I think there's newspaper racks there too.
So, is that going to shorten the access for public access there, right? It'll impede some of that, maybe?
It's a pretty flat sidewalk.
It's about 10 feet, but again, because the doors already stick out, people are already having to walk around the doors. Building code requires that commercial properties that the doors open out instead of inward, because you've heard these horrible stories about people piling up on the door and fires burning theaters. Not that that's going to happen in your cafe.
So, then, okay, understand.
But I think the short version is, yes, they did not have...
So, my next question is, where do these tables get stored, and tables and seating get stored?
Just back in the cafe. Yeah, we just put them back in the cafe. They're, they're inside there now, so when we take them in nightly, they just...
Every night?
Yeah, they're, they're fairly small.
We kind of went through this a long time ago, with storage, if something happened in there, proper storage of it, if it's in the same spot and done properly because of the firefighters, if something happened in there.
Yeah.
Stuff falling on, pushing stuff away, trying to make it, so if you could, when you store those, put those in an area, hopefully the same place every night.
Yeah, there's actually room inside the cafe. Yeah, there's, there's small tables, I mean, two-seaters, so.
Okay. All right.
And welcome to Avalon, and congratulations on your new business.
Thank you. The city's been awesome. It's been a great experience. Thank you very much.
Ole.
I have a question for the city manager. Rumor has it that there's some great Crescent Avenue Front Street dining proposal floating around through the bowels of the city and will sometime come to us.
Well, we have infamously stumbled through at my direction, looking at how it might look, and I don't know if that was the best approach, so I would say that outdoor dining has gone through the planning commission as a informational item, looking for their feedback, and it is the plan to bring it to the council for your consideration. So, I need to do some additional discussing with key city departments and stakeholders before I do that. It's my goal to bring it back to you probably in the next, I would say, two months. I think that's, that's appropriate. So, there wouldn't be any type of consideration that I would be bringing back as to the concept. I would add, interestingly enough, that nothing prohibits any individual business owner in the interim coming forward with an encroachment permit such as this on their own. So, while I can certainly come back in, in two months and say, here's some things for you guys to consider, here's an outdoor dining concept for a general area in, in the interim, certainly any potential impacted business owner could come to you and, and make an application, just as this gentleman has this evening, and that would be at your discretion.
So, I think, that being said, this is a stand-alone application, it doesn't have any bearing on Crescent Avenue.
That's absolutely right. And you could be, let's say for instance, that we were considering a geographic area of Crescent Avenue, any individual business owner on Crescent Avenue has that right to come forward at any time.
Now, would they take that to the planning first, and then...
Comes directly to you as an encroachment permit.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a motion on item 13?
Any comments from the public?
Start off the agenda yet. No, Denise hasn't.
Lisa Lavelle, Planning Commission, I would just like to say, I think this is actually an okay design because of the width of the table and the fact that it does not serve alcohol, so, thank you.
Great, thank you for your time. Any other comments?
Moved to improve the encroachment permit to allow the placement of up to four tables and chairs outside the Avocado Grill on the sidewalk south of Sumner's Avenue, and find that the criteria for approval of the encroachment permit are met.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is this new rent or the old rent? Ben?
This is the new rent. This reflects the new lease terms that were just sent out on Monday.
Call for the vote? There you go, congratulations.
Four, four eyes and one abstention, Councilmember Cassidy.
Okay, do we want to go to announcements really quick before we go to closed session?
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay. City manager report?
No report for me, thank you.
City attorney?
Yeah, tomorrow, the city manager and I will be in a meeting in Long Beach to discuss the Falls Canyon litigation with the attorneys that will be taking the case over and being paid by the insurers and not the city.
Good news, good luck.
Good news, yes.
Joe?
Comments?
Uh-huh. Announcements?
Announcements, just, I thank everybody who participated in, in the fundraiser for my Uncle Rich. It was a smash success, and it was really awesome. And then, don't forget to show up to the parade, we're honoring World War II veterans for the Fourth of July. It's going to be a lot of fun. And the last thing is, I'd also like to thank Mr. Flynn, since he's here again, for bringing in your water, and we really appreciate that as a city, how you got on board, and you, you're actually encouraged a few other business owners to do the same. So, I can't tell you how much that it means to us as a community. Thank you very much, and much success to your project.
One, I attended one of those previously mentioned meetings, the League of California Cities' Revan Tax Committee and the Community Services Committee, and brought back some stuff that I gave to Ben that might help us, especially some information about some water bonds that are going to be on the ballot that might help us in both the reclamation project, and also help us in maybe stormwater diverted for the big channel under Pancake Cottage. Some good opportunities there, and I want to thank the island company for removing the barrier, moving the barriers back in front of Salads and Joes and on Crescent and Catalina. They were required to do that, I think, on the 2nd of January or July for three days, and they moved them back earlier, so it opens up the street for Fourth of July, which I think is commendable, which is nice of those guys to do that. They don't usually get pat on the back.
And Councilmember Olson, are there any meetings or conferences upcoming in the next week or so that, given our new policy...
It's covered under the prior policy, so I don't need to talk about it. Yes, there's the meeting in, where the hell is that?
It's, it's in Rancho Grande, the Independent Cities Association.
Summer meeting, that'll be placed next Thursday and Friday.
And one of the items on the agenda is water.
Water.
Water, water, water.
Water, water, water. A lot of water.
I have two. I am going to work with Ben and Denise tomorrow morning, and I'd like to try to make the Gateway Cities Council meeting tomorrow night. Not sure if I can, but I may attend, it's my first meeting. And my other item is, where, does anybody know where we are with the general plan? And this might be a question for Amanda.
The general plan is, in and of itself, is done. We are working on getting the LCP updated. We have to go back and catch up all the updates that we've done to the municipal code so far, because our, when we update Title IX, that's part of our LCP. So, we just sent all the old ordinances off to RenCon, our consultant, and then they're going to be including that into an update. That LCP update goes to the Coastal Commission, for them to update our LCP, and then we'll be...
So, for all intents and purposes, though, the, the prior council has approved the general plan, so there's no further approvals that come back?
I don't believe so.
The only, the only last item on the general plan was to get approval by the State Housing Department... department on the housing element of that, of that plan, and that was contingent upon your passing the emergency shelter ordinance, which you did tonight. So we'll submit the approval of this ordinance to them, then they should certify the housing element of the general plan, and then we're done vis-à-vis the general plan. We will do some more work on the LCP, but just so you are not surprised, when we, when the prior council adopted the general plan in the housing element, there were three other ordinances that the state suggested that we adopt, and so we're bringing those to you shortly. They're not required, but they're strongly suggested.
So I just want to make the recommendation, because I know Ole and Richard were involved in this process, and obviously, as a previous planning commissioner, it's been a long process. So for Joe and Annie that haven't been participative prior, maybe find some time with Amanda, bring yourselves up to speed on the general plan itself and the upcoming pieces.
And we're nowhere near done with that, because the LCP amendment's going to take...
Prior to going into closed session, Kelly, I see that you're in the audience, do you have something you're employed? It's not that our librarian comes up, comes here every day.
She comes here every week.
Hi, I'm Kelly Conne, I'm from Avalon Library. Our summer reading program is continuing. We're going to have programs every Wednesday, so that includes tomorrow at 3:30. Tomorrow, it's a steel drum performance. Should be good. It's intended for children and families, but I think adults will like tomorrow's as well. And then every other Saturday, we have an art workshop for kids and teens and tweens. We just had one last Saturday, so the next one will be the week after this weekend, from 10 to 12 on Saturdays.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we move to closed session?
Yeah, we have two closed session items. The first is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. This is Lisa versus Avalon. The second is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation. We'll be discussing a comment we received from Betty Jo Garcia's attorney threatening litigation on the personnel decisions being contemplated.
Thank you. Scott Campbell?
We have no actions that the Brown Act requires us to report.
Thank you. You're changing your little spiel.
I know.
Okay. Meetings adjourned.